The December sixteenth, twenty twenty four, regular city council meeting is called to order. The time is six P. M. Before we begin, I kindly ask all council members to please put away cell phones. If you need to conduct personal business during the meeting, please make a motion for a recess. For those participating by phone, please ensure your phone is muted unless you are speaking. Also, when speaking, please remember to state your name for the benefits of those streaming the meeting. As a reminder to all attendees, this meeting is being streamed live. The camera is located at the back of the council chambers above the clock. Our meetings are governed by Robert's Rules of Orders in accordance with Wassilla Municipal Code two dot zero four dot zero nine zero. In order to maintain an orderly and respectful discussion, I respectfully request the council to observe the following guidelines. Please seek recognition before speaking. No member may speak more than twice on the same motion without an affirmative vote to suspend the rules. No member may speak a second time on a matter until all others who wish to speak have had an opportunity to do so. These rules are in place to ensure that everyone's right to speak is respected and to prevent any one voice from dominating the discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Cottle?
Here.
Councilmember Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Crafton?
Here.
Councilmember Viallak?
Here.
Councilmember Rubio?
Here.
You do have a call, Madam Mayor. All council members are present and participating here in council chambers.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And Councilmember Viallak, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Before changes are discussed, are there conflicts of interest to declare?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Rubio?
On the agenda tonight is A. M. Number twenty-four seventy-six, approving a contract task order to Big Dipper Construction Incorporated in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand for water repairs and emergency water utility repairs under the utility equipment with operator service terms contract. While I do not have a conflict of interest to declare, I want to make the public aware of my relationship with Big Dipper Construction. The company is owned by my father. He is not a member of my household, and I have no financial interest in his company.
Thank you, Councilmember Rubio. Are there changes to the agenda? Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to, from the consent agenda, I would like to pull item eight point three point one, resolution serial twenty-four eighteen. And then I would also like to pull A. M. Twenty-four seventy-six, item eight point four point two.
Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton?
Thank you, Mayor. We are still waiting on one of the incoming legislators to show up. Could we move five point one, the proclamation, to after commission and agency reports, please?
Okay. Okay. Are there any other changes? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as or is there objection? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as amended. We are now at commission and agencies reports. Planning Commission, City Planner Wellman.
Thank you, Mayor Ledford. This is City Planner Wellman. And tonight, I just wanted to report on our recent planning commission meeting, which we had on December tenth. And at the meeting, we had a conditional use, twenty-four dash zero five for a Lowe's had a storage increase on their property that they were proposed to the commission, and that was approved. We also discussed our capital improvement project, projects which were put before the commission for approval, and those were approved as well. For January, we're going to be having some training for our new commissioners, as well as for the existing staff, which will include quasi judicial training and parliamentary procedures. Thank you.
Thank you. And?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Planner Wellman, you mentioned the conditional approval for Lowe's, the storage, which was a storage on a separate lot that they're on right now. Do they currently have some sort of waiver or something that allows them to stack Conexes in that front parking lot in the commercial district?
Thank you. I would have to check as far as whether the waiver is there. I do understand that they're going to temporarily be using some of those storage Conex boxes while they move everything into the existing or the new building, but the goal is to not have those in the future. But as far as existing, I would have to find out.
Thank you. I'd like to hear back on that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a student here from Wassilla High? Not seeing one. And?
I know she's close, but she's still five, ten minutes away at least.
Okay. We have a legislator in traffic we're waiting on. So, um.
Is it traffic in Wassilla?
No, Wassilla don't have traffic. Anyway, we will start with our public hearings, and then when she arrives, we will deviate back to the special orders of the day. Okay. We are now at public hearing. There are five ordinance scheduled for public hearing tonight. Madam Clerk, please read ordinance serial number twenty-four dash twenty-five by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can we just take just a minor brief at ease?
Please.
Thank you.
I can't get enough. In my eye count.
Why you sound?
We'll get, just bear with us. We'll get organized at the end a little bit.
Okay, Madam Mayor. First public hearing this evening, ordinance serial number twenty-four twenty-five A. M., which is amended. Amending Wassilla Municipal Code, Chapter two sixty, Planning Commission to upgrade and clarify the duties and authority of the Wassilla Planning Commission, authorize compensation for regular and special meetings attended, and codify the meeting and scheduled procedures by the commission. This is postponed from the November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four council meeting for an additional public hearing. There is a motion on the floor to adopt after the public hearing is closed.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing on ordinance serial number twenty-four twenty-five is now open. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. And seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. The motion to adopt is pending. Is there further discussion on the ordinance?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton?
Thank you, Mayor. I spent some more time looking over this, just making sure this is where I wanted it to be. I was thinking there was an item in our commissions and boards generally that was going to handle this, and then after discussion with our clerk, we realized it was still in this portion. So I wanted to move to amend this ordinance one more time. I'm not sure exactly what page it is, but it's page eighty-three, or sorry, page eighty-three, line eighty-three. And I wanted to move to amend line eighty-three, strike out each commission member or each commissioner shall be a resident from the city while serving on the commission, and insert in its place, a person is eligible to be a commission member if the person is, one, registered and in all other respects qualified to vote in the city elections, as provided by W. M. C. four point oh point or four point oh, eight point oh one oh, and, two, has been a resident of the city or of territory annexed by the city for at least one hundred and eighty days immediately prior to the appointment.
Okay. Is there discussion on the amendment?
Leave only a second first.
I'm sorry?
Graham, seconds.
Okay. Is there a discussion on the amendment?
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Johnson was first.
Okay. You're gonna, you're gonna end up answering my question, Madam Mayor. So the question is, why are we having a hundred and eighty day immediately prior to the appointment? If you could please elucidate your reasoning on that statement. Thank you.
If I could, Madam Mayor. Thank you. To answer your question, Mr. Johnson, so what actually happened and where this came about is currently our council, and this was basically copy and pasted right out of our council code. The council currently sits at one year as a resident prior to taking a seat on the council. And what we've seen with the planning commission is you can literally register as a resident of the city and then fill out an application for the planning commission at the same time. When we saw this happen earlier, I want to say it was this year, maybe it was last fall, within the last year, we discovered that this person, that the division of elections doesn't necessarily care if there's a residence on the property, and so we don't necessarily know if there's a person that lives there, if they're physically there. And so this was, this is kind of intended to help weed out anybody that might be just trying to jump on our planning commission. Our planning commission has quite a bit of authority, being quasi judicial, and so I'd like to be able to see our residents have a little bit more of a commitment to our city, instead of filling out an application to change your voter registration and then trying to join our planning commission. I understand that there is checks and balances with us, with first, the mayor having to appoint them, and the council having to approve them, though again, what we found is that that can easily be bypassed, depending on how much investigation we do. So again, just another safety measure and a check and balance in place was to add a essentially six-month timeframe prior to joining a planning commission.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, we are voting on the amendment. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes. So now we are back to the original motion as amended. Is there discussion on the original motion as amended?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to the council. This was a very long time coming on this ordinance. I know we've spent quite a bit of discussion on this one as well, or as already, and I just want to say thank you for all this work. This is again, the intent is to help clean up and just provide some structure to our planning commission, as well as clarify some of the duties that exist in their code right now. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Madam Mayor, so we did receive a long brief by Brian Stan Sand. He had, I think, two, two objections to it, and I'd just like to comment on my thinking on this. His first thing was?
Mr. Johnson, this is an ordinance of twenty-four twenty-three?
Am I on the wrong place?
No.
Yes.
I am. I, excuse me. I'll pull my objection.
Is there further discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none. Is there objection to the motion as amended? Then the motion passes. And we are going back up to five point, to five, to special orders of the day. The City of Wassilla proclamation honoring outgoing and incoming state legislators, whereas the City of Wassilla recognizes the vital role of state legislators in shaping policies and advancing initiatives that benefit our community, the Matsubura, and the State of Alaska as a whole. And whereas the outgoing state legislators have demonstrated exemplary dedication, leadership, and service contributing to the economic growth, safety, and well-being of the citizens of Wassilla through their tireless efforts and significant accomplishments. And whereas their legacy of public service has strengthened collaboration between state and local governments, leaving a lasting impact that will guide future generations. And whereas the City of Wassilla warmly welcomes the incoming state legislators who bring fresh ideas, energy, and commitment to serve our community and address the pressing needs of our citizens with a vision for the future. And whereas the City of Wassilla looks forward to working closely with our newly elected legislative leaders, standing ready to support their efforts in continuing to make Alaska a place of opportunity and prosperity for all. Now therefore, I, Linda D. Ledford, Mayor for the City of Wassilla, and the Wassilla City Council, do hereby honor the State of Alaska outgoing and incoming legislators, celebrating their commitment to service and leadership in the Alaska State Legislature, dated the sixteenth day of December, twenty twenty-four. Thank you. If all of you would come to the front, please. Come on, Kathy.
We're gonna, we're gonna, standing by, he goes.
Standing by.
Right here.
Okay.
One, two, three.
Great.
Oh, proud of you guys.
Oh, my God, so I'm scared.
Okay.
That's the royalty.
There you go.
Keep my seat warm.
I will, I will. Do any of you guys want to say anything before we continue on? Now's your chance.
This way or this way or? I'll sit. Hi, so for the record, my name is Jubilee Underwood and Representative-elect for District Twenty-seven, and I am super excited to be able to serve this district. For anybody in the room that doesn't know me, I was born and raised right here, a couple streets over, and literally born in my house. And I deeply love this community. So my, my phone line, my email, everything is constantly open. I love to hear from each and every one of you. If you have concerns, how I can best support you and obviously represent you to the best of my ability. It's an honor. I am so excited to be able to serve the community that has raised me, that I love deeply, and where I'm raising my children as well. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's a tough act to follow. Born and raised here, I am very grateful.
State your name for the record, please.
Yeah, I take that for granted sometimes. Rob Young, thanks for having us tonight. I'm very grateful. Born and raised in the district, lived inside city limits for a long time, and I am very excited and honored to go work for this city and for this community. I've, I've been coaching from, it's funny, I've coached every high school in the district the last twenty-one years, and it's going to be an honor to do everything I can to give our kids a great future out here. And I've been thinking a lot lately about something that one of my favorite mentors said to me four years ago after I, I won my first election on the, on the assembly. He called me up and he says, for one, now what? Right? Because campaigning and governing are two different things. And two, what are you going to do for the people that didn't vote for you? And that was Bert Cottle. We all know him. He's a great man. And, and I've thought a lot about that since this election. And so I just want everybody to know that I don't care what your voter registration is, where you live, if you're in this district, I will fight for you regardless of if you voted for me or not. And I hope I earn everybody's respect through hard work and common sense. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Kathy Tilton. I am currently the Speaker of the House and have represented the Fairview Loop area in the legislature for the last ten years. So, but what I want to say is because we do not have an incorporated city in my district, I always look at the City of Wassilla as being a part of my district and will always be there to help represent the city. So I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you, and thank you for this honor for this evening.
First and speak here in three minutes.
Okay. Thank you all for being here, and we expect to see you, just so you know. Let me tell you now, because you know I will be on the phone when we don't see you, when you're not in Juneau.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, we are on. Madam Clerk, please read ordinance serial number twenty-four thirty-nine and resolution serial number twenty-four seventeen by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution, excuse me, ordinance serial number twenty-four thirty-nine, amending Wassilla Municipal Code subsection three sixty oh six oh A to include Election Day as a paid city holiday, and requesting the same to be, to be a recognized holiday in labor agreements. With that is resolution serial number twenty-four seventeen, urging other municipalities to include Election Day as a paid holiday.
Okay, the public hearing on ordinance serial number twenty-four thirty-nine is now open. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. And seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring you back to the dais. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-four thirty-nine and resolution serial number twenty-four seventeen, or does the council prefer to take these separately?
Separately.
Ian?
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance serial number twenty-four thirty-nine and its accompanying resolution.
Is there a second?
It's for lack of a second.
It dies for lack of a second.
Did we want to take them separately as all?
I'm sorry?
It sounds like the council just wanted to take them separately is more so what it was.
The motion died for lack of a second, therefore should, would have to be put back on a future agenda, would it not?
Yes. Well, through the chair, to the bodies. So, the, the motion on the floor was to adopt them together, twenty-four thirty-nine, twenty-four seventeen. Somebody wanted to offer a separate motion to go individually, that would work, or the whole thing could, if there's no interest in that, the whole bundle dies for a lack of a second and could be brought back under a different number, different time, different meeting.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please read ordinance serial number twenty-four forty by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget by appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund fund balance to the clerk's office operating budget for the purpose of compensating the administrative hearing officer for work on appeal cases filed under Wassilla Municipal Code, Chapter two seven six.
The public hearing on ordinance serial number twenty-four forty is now open. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Seeing no one, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-four forty?
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance serial twenty-four forty.
Is there a second?
Second by Councilman Johnson.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Johnson to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-four forty. Is there discussion? Mr. Graham?
Madam Mayor, of course, the, one of the primary jobs of the council is to make sure that the, the city is funded appropriately to enforce the regulations that we have. You can see that the majority of our issues that we're having with the adjustment officer is animal care and regulation. That is a critical part of safety here in the city, and I certainly think we should make sure that adequate funds are available so the administrative hearing officer can continue his or her work.
Okay. Is there further discussion? Mr. Johnson?
Madam Mayor, so it is my understanding, then, I'll just bring up a conversation that I had with Jamie, that the additional funding here is a total addition to the original budget of twenty thousand, which would bring this particular line item up to about forty-five thousand or something like that. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that's what we're doing. Correct? Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The Chair to the Council, in the interest of full disclosure, since this ordinance was written and presented, the two cases, twenty-four oh three and twenty-four oh four, have been withdrawn. Twenty-four oh two, there was a decision sent out today, so we expect to see that two thousand dollars, the estimated cost, is going to increase. Left balance in the account as of about an hour ago was eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars. So, still based on that, appeals run about seven thousand, depending on the complexity. I still will stand by and say that this additional funding, this bump in funding at twenty-five will get us through the year. Of course, if we don't use it, it remains and goes back to the general fund.
Further discussion? Hearing none. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, please read ordinance serial number twenty-four dash forty-one by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget by appropriating one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund fund balance to the Water Repairs Fund.
Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. This is testifying on ordinance serial number twenty-four dash forty-one. Seeing no one, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-four forty-one?
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance serial number twenty-four forty-one.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by Councilmember Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Crafton to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-four forty-one. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Graham?
Thank you. So when I look at this, I see part of it, and then I look farther down the agenda, and I see A. M. Number twenty-four seventy-six, approving a contract award for one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for water repairs and emergency water repairs under the utility equipment with operator service term contract. So my question would be to our Public Works Director, number one, are these tied together? And number two, if we're operating such a big number, why are we not going out to bid on this stuff as opposed to just saying, well, we've got some money, let's hand it to a contractor to make this happen?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So, yeah, they are tied together. That's a structural error. I should have pointed that out during our agenda meeting. So they're related. The bid process? The bid process in the second award is through the competitive bidding process that we already had, so it uses the on-call operator and piece of equipment that Dipper was selected to that bid process. So it did go through the normal bidding process. What the two requests are, the request for the $125,000 comes from an error when we put together the budget. We had funding for sewer repairs, but the water repairs was omitted by accident. So the first correction is to move the the funding into that accounting fund, if you will. We had the same amount last year, about 125,000. And then the second AM is to authorize that money to be used through the existing contract with Dipper Construction. They've already responded to several water and sewer emergencies, and we've used that contract as in the past for their time of materials with their equipment and their emergency response.
Thank you for the answer there, but, you know, I like Dipper, I like Paul, he's a great guy, great contractor, very responsible, very responsive to the needs of the city. However, I hear from other contractors that this operator with equipment thing essentially is a huge umbrella. That's how we did the train station parking lot, operator with equipment, that's how we did paving, multiple paving jobs, including the paving across the street over here. The concerns that I'm hearing from other contractors are, why are these jobs, which we know are specific jobs, not being bid specifically as jobs as opposed to just being lumped into one big, you know, operator with equipment sort of thing? Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I would say that that contract has been used for projects that don't rise to the level of full-blown design and creating the bid package. That's definitely something that we can cease doing. This request tonight is solely based on emergency repairs, so when we identified the sewer leak on Dana, sewage was boiling out of the ground and we needed to mobilize. So that's that's what this contract is made for, and that's what the bidding process with Dipper and several other prospective contractors provided was a cost to have an operator, a piece of equipment there in a certain amount of time. And so that was the response that that bid was based on. So that's why this is still the vehicle that we think makes sense with emergency water repairs.
And I agree, for emergency repairs, this is exactly the way you handle it, and I'm glad you're handling it that way, but I think for striping the parking lot at the City Hall, for paving a parking lot, for preparing, you know, groundwork and putting in lights at the train station, I think those are, you know, projects where other contractors should have a should have a shot at it. If Dipper wins the contract, great, you know, I mean, he's earned it.
Sure.
Let's make sure he does that, but let's make sure that we're transparent with other contractors. I have no objection to what's happening here tonight, I just need to voice concern that I'm hearing from other contractors.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Question for Eric. Take me back, because I believe the reason the bids are like this for the sewer and the water is because we have to have someone on call in contract to make it worth it for any contractor in the city. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, there's definitely a cost associated with having people and equipment ready to go. There's definitely, in these emergency cases, we need to respond immediately to address sewer, you know, the the natural outcome of these leaks. The other thing is that the cost of the cost of this work exceeds our budgetary limits within code within about a day. So to respond to an emergency water situation is about $25,000 a day. So as soon as a project rolls into two days like Dana did, then we've exceeded our limit for purchasing. So it makes sense for us to seek approval from the council first to say this money is to go to that so that we can leverage those contractors and repair within two days and have an estimated cost of 60,000 for those.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If no one else. On that note, so would it be worth to put more money in the budget? Because, I mean, I would say we're lucky that there was only, I would say, one or two, I don't know how many you said, water line breaks. I would think that we would need to have a little bit more in the budget.
We could look at that for the next budget cycle. I don't think at this point we need to amend the number here tonight. If we get close, I'll definitely be back to let you know what's going on and get some more approval.
Eric, will you talk about the water leak that was over on Bogard in front of Matt Valley?
Yeah, so that was a very impactful water leak. It had been, we think the genesis of it was the fact that it's a bone and joint center up on the hill, but they had two water services that weren't buried properly in the ditch, and so they would freeze every winter, so then they'd hire a thaw company to come unthaw and it basically cooked both their water lines and they turned to Swiss cheese. So we were losing about 200 gallons a minute from that one leak. So I think if I calculate it right, it's like 260,000 gallons a day just from that leak. So as soon as we fixed it, and that was a very large repair, that was Dipper Construction as well, they had to chase all of those lines, we had to reroute Bogard several times, and then we had to rebuild it and then repave it. So that is the amount of water that we're saving, so electricity as well, that was hugely impactful for our bottom line. So I wish it didn't take us however many years to find it, but we're seeing noticeable decreases in operating costs because of repairing that.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Okay. We are on to Madam Clerk, please read ordinance serial number 24-42 and AM number 24-77 by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance serial number 2442, amending the fiscal year 2025 budget by accepting and appropriating a federal Homeland Security Grant Award Amendment passed through the state of Alaska Department of Military and Veterans Affairs in the amount of $25,000 as part of the 2022 state and local cybersecurity grant program for the city of Wasilla Cybersecurity Risk Assessment. That's 22LCGPGY22. With that is AM number 2477, contract award to Structured in the amount of $51,250 for cybersecurity support services.
The public hearing on ordinance serial number 2442 is now open. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. Seeing no one, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number 24-42 and AM number 2477?
Madam Mayor? I move to approve ordinance number 2442 and its accompanying AM 2477.
Is there a second?
Rubio seconds?
It's been moved by Councilmember Cottle and seconded by Councilmember Rubio to adopt ordinance serial number 24-42 and AM number 24-77. Is there discussion? Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, as most of you are aware, this last week was the Alaska Municipal League Annual Conference in Anchorage. The city of Wasilla now has three persons who sit on the board of the Alaska Municipal League. Councilmember Cottle represents the entire area of the Matsu Borough. Mayor Ledford is going to be the vice president, or is now the vice president of the Alaska Municipal League, and I sit on that board as a past president. And this ability to do this is a direct reflection of the work that Alaska Municipal League does by securing a statewide contract, much like a statewide purchasing contract that the state would have, but in this case, it's a service contract where any municipality or any government organization can take advantage of, I hate to call it a lower rate, but to take advantage of a negotiated rate for some very definite services. And when it comes to cybersecurity, there, you know, our IT department does a great job, but I mean, we don't have 10 people in our IT department, you know? Structured has over 100 employees, so they're perfect for putting this together. And I just wanted to emphasize the fact that, you know, people wonder what AML does, why does the city belong to AML, why do we care what the Alaska Municipal League does? And this is part of the reason that we belong to AML and part of the reason that AML is so effective on a local level. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, is there an objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. We are now at persons to be heard, a time for members of the public to share their views with the council. This is not a question and answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the council or administration. And Mr. Sterns, you're up first.
Good evening, my name is Tom Sterns. I'm the Senior Ambassador for the Wasilla Area Seniors Incorporated. We will be closed on the 24th and the 25th of December for Christmas, and we will be closed on the 1st of January for New Year's Day. We have some upcoming events on, a week from today, we will have our Wasi Christmas Party, and we will be giving away to all our seniors, different things, Christmas gifts, you might say, and then we'll have a great meal, and we'd love to have you all there to be part of that. Then, to get to next week, we have to get the things to put in those bags. And so all of you have a sheet there, green sheet, says Wasi Christmas Giving. We're trying to get items to put, to give to our seniors. Some of these items that you see here will be given out this week, and they will go out with our Meals on Wheels. And so every, every one of the people that receives our Meals on Wheels will get a Christmas bag with goodies in it or socks and whatever things are on there, socks, hats, gloves, whatever it is that we have. And we fill these bags, I think they're going to fill the bags tomorrow, but you can keep giving up until the end of the week, and then we'll give those things away, whatever you give, on Monday to the congregate meal folks at Wasi. So this is an opportunity for you as council members and our public to support our seniors and to take care of our seniors. Also, we have on the 26th, the local Rabbi, Rabbi Greenberg, and his group are going to come to Wasi and do a Hanukkah presentation. Now, if you've never had one of those, seen one of those, it's good, it's very instructive, you might say. And he'll be doing that, I think, at noon on that day. So we'd invite you to come and be part of that. We also, don't forget our healthy aging program, you'll need that after all the stuff you eat at Christmas time. So you'll have to come to our gym and work out and get all those calories taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sterns. David Wilson, Senator.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. For the record, this is Senator David Wilson, David Wilson, your city resident, live within the city limits. This is my last update for this and this role. I don't think I will have another update to give you guys. And I encourage you, Mayor, as you did, to encourage your representative-elect Underwood and Senator-elect Yatt to participate. I know you guys will treat them well as you treated me this past eight years, and I thank you for that and the conversations and fellowship that we've had over that time. Just a couple of updates here. Tomorrow, the Division of Elections is going to have the Electoral College announcement for those three folks that are going to be going. That will be at, in Anchorage, at the Egan Center, from 11:00 to noon. Also, we've got the upcoming Christmas Friendship Dinner from 11:00 to 3:00. So if you don't have any plans, for folks that may just want to fellowship with other folks within the city and the greater borough area, that's be a wonderful opportunity to do. It's a wonderful upstanding tradition here in the Menorah Center. And then January 30th is the upcoming Transportation Fair. We tell folks this is important to understand what road projects are coming up, because once dirt is moving, it is nearly impossible to change those plans. So now's the time to meet with your DOT folks, see what plans might happen, and then succession just be getting underway. You can meet with those folks, if you don't like something, go talk to your folks in Juneau and let them know, hey, we want, we like this, we want to help support this, or hey, we might need to have a change or two here at those plants. And that is January 30th from 3:00 to 7:00 at Raven Hall is that Transportation Fair. Again, it's been a joy and pleasure. I'm sure that I will see you guys around at, I don't know, an upstanding luncheon or so, maybe on a Tuesday or on a Thursday, and or some other civic project that I am involved in, or who knows, in a couple of years, I might be in that center, spot in the dais. But other than that, I just wish you all a happy Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year, and again, thank you for this wonderful opportunity to serve the city and look forward to serving in some other capacity. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Senator. Dan Flegenstein. You have three minutes, and please begin your testimony by stating your first and last name and if you're a city resident.
Thank you. My name is Dan Flegenstein. I'm president of Matsu Softball Association. I live on the border of city Wasilla, so I can see the city across my property line. I'm here tonight to give a quick update from our 2024 season as related to the management agreement between Matsu Softball Association and the city of Wasilla. We conduct our softball program at the Bumpus Softball Complex located on Mystery Avenue in Wasilla. Matsu Softball organizes leagues for coed and men's teams at the facility, and we offer skills-based divisions of play. Last summer, we celebrated our 41st season of softball in the Matsu Valley, and we're looking forward to our 42nd season coming up. We had 48 registered teams throughout our leagues last summer, a total of about 740 players participating weekly, and we have between 800 to 1,000 people visiting the ballpark each week. The communities represented in our local softball leagues are Wasola, Palmer, Big Lake, Willow, and Talkeetna. We run a 10-week season beginning in mid-May as soon as the thaw and the fields have dried out, and then we run through August. Our games are held Monday through Thursday nights, and we leave Fridays in reserve in case we have rainouts or reschedules. We hosted three major tournaments last summer, the Matsu Memorial in May. We also hosted the Mugshot Showdown in July, and at the Mugshot Tournament, we presented a letter of appreciation to the city of Wasilla, and Councilmember Rubio and Councilmember Cottle were there. We appreciate you guys attending that. We also hosted a state championship tournament in August. And throughout our tournament play that we hosted, the communities of Anchorage, Fairbanks, Kenai, Noam and Matsu were represented with over 1,000 visitors from out of town attending those tournaments. Our priority needs moving forward, we're currently operating at capacity at the ballpark. Our nights of scheduling, we host three games per evening with a total of 12 games on the four fields, and that's the maximum amount of games we can schedule per night, and we have more demand essentially than what we can accommodate. So the last few years, we've been working on our field expansion plan, which we'd like to assist in building two new turf fields at that facility, and our work is ongoing on that project. We also would have a dire need to expand our parking lot and include some paving, mainly for, to improve our access for emergency services during tournaments. We have a gravel parking lot that's not very well organized, so we end up with a lot of dust and unorganized, inefficient parking. So we end up with a lot of dust and unorganized, inefficient parking. And parking overflow is onto the adjoining road on both sides of Mystery Avenue and it's a real congestion. We've really appreciated working with the Public Works Department. Those guys have been doing a great job for us. And we're very excited to work with them on building bathrooms there at the, at the ballpark. Am I out of time? Okay. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, I move to suspend the rules to allow Mr. Fleckenstein to continue as you were.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you.
Sorry.
We're also working on our plan to improve the drainage so that the spring thaw season, we have, depending on how much snow we have in the winter, sometimes we have to wait a couple of weeks for literally flooding conditions to abate at the fields before we can begin play. And we've been working with Public Works on that as well to put in some dry wells to assist with that, with that drainage. Matsu Softball has dedicated funds that we set aside each year from our member dues to complete field improvements and also toward our field expansion project. Our operating expenses for field maintenance, portable toilets, field and facility improvements, umpires, administration, insurance, rent, and a myriad of other costs contribute to the community and the growing economy of the City of Wasilla. And we're very proud to say that our bulk of our expenses stay right here in the Matsu Valley. We really appreciate the commitment that the City of Wasilla has made to Matsu Softball. We appreciate working with you and we look forward to another successful season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
And now we have Michelle Sturgeon.
Hi, I'm Michelle Sturgeon. I'm the Executive Director at the Children's Police. I'm actually here to give you guys some kudos. I'm always really excited when a member of my staff does some phenomenal work. And I've had about four interactions with the Wasilla Police Department since Thanksgiving moving forward. We had someone attempt to break into our building. And when I tell you WPD showed up within five minutes at the building, had everything surrounded. Whoever was there took off on foot on Thanksgiving night, guys. I was so moved by that. Just seeing them out there freezing cold, taking care of us. So it's just good kudos to that team. Also, Officer Kaitlin Baker. I work in child abuse. Kaitlin's one of the child abuse investigative officers. Just big kudos to her. She did a really good job on a case recently. And her Wasilla School Resource Officers are amazing. They work with kids every single day. So that's what I'm here is just to tell you that our police department is doing a fabulous job. And I really appreciate them attending all of our trainings and everything we put out. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And I will pass it along to them. Okay. We are on to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to remove my objection to AM 2476.
Madam Clerk, please read the items for approval under the consent agenda by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have the special meeting minutes November 18th, 2024. We have one introduction recommended for public hearing on January 13th, 2025. That is ordinance serial number 2501, amending the fiscal year 2025 budget by accepting and appropriating $19,109.84 from Museums Alaska Inc. and the Rasmussen Foundation Collections Management Fund for the Caring for Families Treasures, Wasilla Museum Training and Community Outreach Project. We have three action memorandums left on the consent agenda. AM number 2475, approving a contract amendment to NISER Construction Incorporated in the amount of $279,037.28 for additional work supporting the expansion of Apron E at the Wasilla Municipal Airport. Second is AM number 2476, approving a contract task order award to Big Dipper Construction Incorporated in the amount of $125,000 for water repairs and emergency water utility repairs under the utility equipment with operator services term contract. And lastly, AM number 2478, contract award to Civic Plus in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for website redesign services.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, a second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Crafton and seconded by Councilmember Veelock to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none. The motion is approved. We are on to unfinished business. Madam Clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance serial number 2423, repealing Wasilla Municipal Code Chapter.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may, did we skip 8.3.1, which was pulled?
To new business, sir.
Just wasn't acknowledged. Thank you.
May I continue?
Yes.
Ordinance serial number 2423, repealing Wasilla Municipal Code Chapter 244, Boards and Commissions Generally, and enacting Wasilla Municipal Code Chapter 2.58, City Commissions to Clarify and Update the Duties and Authority of City Commissions Permit, or Permit Commissions to Compensate Commissioners for Training, Mandate Training, Impose Clear attendance Requirements, and Specific Teleconference Participation Requirements. This ordinance is being presented to council following its referral to the Planning Commission. A motion. There is a motion on the floor.
Yes. A motion to adopt is pending. Is there further discussion on this ordinance?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. To the council, just a heads up, the memo has different lines. So there was a few changes that were sent back to us from the Planning Commission. So if you look at the memo, the line numbers are different on there. So just a heads up if, when we reference line numbers. I wanted to speak to a couple of the changes that they had on there. The first one, which is in reference to the letter that we received from Mr. Brian Sand. And just kind of speak to the idea behind where this came from. So essentially, the Planning Commission is recommending removal of it to just have it be that a member has three consecutive unexcused absences is essentially how it would, it would sit. The idea behind including the remarks, if you physically miss a certain amount of meetings, in this case, half of the meetings, and it's, it's grounds for removal from the Planning Commission was, it goes a little bit back to the buy-in that we'd like to see in our planning commissioners. If they're not necessarily physically present here, it makes it a little bit harder to engage with the public and with the rest of the council. I think we've all noticed it, whether it's been you or one of the other council members, when they're not here, engagement is just a little bit less. They're either not bringing as many comments for it or if you just don't have good enough service in the area you're at, you're not able to hear what's happening as, as well. So the idea behind this was to, again, encourage that we wanted people here. It was never to discourage, in this case, people that work on the slope, from not being able to participate in our Planning Commission. I just wanted to see a bit more of a presence of the people inside the city than people that couldn't be here. The other one, which is on page, this one here is 146, line 219 and 220. The other, they wanted to add that the trainings be during meetings as well. I feel like that, as, as council members, we've gone through training. It's generally not here at it. I think the in-depth training would be best served to Planning Commission members if it's completely separate from a meeting. I mean, the mini trainings, for instance, that our attorney provides to us are a little bit different of a measure. But the training and reference in this case here is intended to be partly authority as well as the duties that the Planning Commissioners have. So it's best served at a separate time. And again, we're trying to make sure that they're compensated for it since we know training can take a few hours, depending on how, what questions they might have. So I'm curious to hear what the rest of the council has to say about some of these changes.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Clerk, the motion on the floor is to adopt 2423 without the Planning Commission recommended changes. Is that correct?
Through the Chair, to Councilmember Graham, that is correct. The main motion on the floor was 2023 as it was written, went back to the Planning Commission, and they just brought forward recommendations.
Okay, thank you. So if I may, continue. Mr. Crafton, I, I agree with you that Planning Commissioners, whenever possible, should be here. As you're well aware, much of the printed information that is presented to the Planning Commission is outsized. It's not eight and a half by 11. It doesn't present well on an iPad or iPhone or other device that they may be using there. These large 11 by 17 sheets, color-coded, make it virtually, I won't say impossible, but very, very difficult to understand what's going on if you don't have that outsized document in front of you. And if you're, you know, be it on the slope, be it in Bethel, be it, you know, in Washington State on vacation or whatever, it's going to be very difficult for you to be able to have that outsized document in front of you. So having the physical presence here, I think, is, is very critical. You know, the, the, what the Planning Commission proposed is a member has, you know, would be relieved of his duties. He or she would be relieved of their duties if they have three consecutive unexcused absences. And then there's, they struck the part that says physically misses more than half the meetings by the commission over the 365-day period. I, I do agree that a lot of folks that have the, this unusual work arrangements anywhere else in the state, it's pretty common here in the state to have two on, two off, three on, one off, you know, six on, you know, two off. I mean, there's all sorts of staggered schedules out there. And we have all sorts of great people working staggered schedules. And we should certainly try to incorporate them where possible. But we need people here. So I think the three unexcused absences is good. But I, but I also think, you know, that perhaps, maybe the word unexcused needs to be a little bit more defined. I mean, right now, if I'm going to miss a city council meeting, I can just call the clerk and say, I'm not going to be there. And then the clerk will say, Mr. Graham won't be there and he's excused unless the objection is raised. So I'm not sure what we're calling an excused absence of the Planning Commission. If they just call the, the city planner and say, hey, I'm not going to be there. Is that excused, you know, or is it just announced? I mean, I, I'm kind of confused there and I would like to see a little clarification on that. I don't know if you or any of the other members have any comment on that. And then the other item that you discussed and that they discussed was training. You know, the original ordinance says that the mayor can decide that they get paid for training. Where is it here? Let me find the right page. It says, "The mayor may authorize compensation for training or meetings other than those held by the commission as long as approval is granted before writing, before the member attends that training or other meeting." And it doesn't specify that it has to be, you know, training by our attorney or by an agent of the city. You know, I mean, theoretically, we could send them to Washington DC, to National Association of Counties to get some training on quasi-judicial issues and be done there. And I don't, I don't think that was, I'm pretty sure that wasn't your intent with that. And I'm looking at the original ordinance, starting at line 119. But so I, a little clarification on that, I would appreciate as well. Thank you.
So Polly, correct me if I'm wrong. We just adopted 2425, which governs Boards and Commissions, which governs the Planning Commission. And for the Planning Commission, we struck the reference to special meeting pay. So now it just says they're $200 for each meeting attended. So perhaps, depending on the will of the body, I don't know that this special meeting pay on, I'm on line 214, page 112 of the packet, page nine. That language may need to be tweaked as well.
Madam Mayor, if I could respond to Mr. Graham's comments there.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you. As far as I, I recall in the conversations I've had with Jamie, the unexcused, excused aspect, same con, same concept for the city council, basically. As long as you give them advance notice, the intent is that they're excused unless the objection is raised by the body. I, thinking about it a bit more, you know, it, I think the, the half was maybe a bit extreme in its original intent. I believe Jamie should have a copy of it. But I, I was considering proposing, basically, I don't know if it'd be increasing it or decreasing it to 75%. So if you miss 75% of the meetings in a 365-day year, then it would be considered grounds for removal regardless of the unexcused absences. So essentially, you would still have to miss a pretty significant amount of, of time to be able to be automatically removed or at least be grounds for removal. Again, I, I'm okay with it either way. Again, like I said, the, the consideration I had was changing it to the 75% option instead of just the half. And I, I think that the meeting one, it's fine either way. I, I think it's more of an additive thing. I don't think it takes away from its original content. But I would agree with our clerk that we probably do need to strike as a special meeting when we get there. But that's just more of a clerical amendment when we, when we do decide that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Johnson.
Well, speaking of the 75%, if you have one meeting a month, if you miss 75%, that's eight, nine meetings a year. So if you attended four months, four meetings in the year, you couldn't be removed from office.
They meet twice a month.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah.
They have two meetings a month now.
They do?
Yes. Well.
That's 75. No, I won't, I don't.
I think, may, may I?
Yes.
Councilmember, through the Chair to the body, remember, this ordinance governs all of our Boards and Commissions. So depend, or Commissions. So depending on the Commission, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I know the Parks and Rec Commission meets, Sarah helped me.
Once a quarter.
Quarterly. Airport Advisory, I believe, is quarterly as well. So if that helps or doesn't help or not everybody's on the same two-meeting-a-month schedule as the Planning Commission.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah. I almost think with the 75%, I'd almost think it just shouldn't be there at all. I mean, then it's not even kind of common sense to me. It's a person, to me, it's saying that a, someone on one of these commissions needs to make every effort to be there in person. If they can't, you know, common sense is if you can't make it to any, maybe you should resign or whatever. But 75% seems pretty extreme. I, I think it's just kind of, maybe shouldn't be there at all. I think 75 is, is the number so large, why bother? That's what I kind of think. And when it comes to the training and a Commissioner being trained, paid to train, I would think that is part of their stipend that they're getting for the meetings. It's up to, like us, you know, we go to newly elected training at AML. Does, do we get paid for that? No. You know, if you want to be on one of these boards or on the council, you need to take some initiative for your training. I don't expect to get paid to learn what I should be doing. You know, you could be doing online training. You can be, you know, go to train. I, I don't, you know, we're not a business that, you know, that we're employees, that we're going to get paid for absolutely everything. We're here to serve our community. We're here to serve our community. We do get a stipend to help with our time. But I think being paid for everything is just a little extreme. And I think that's part of the stipend for your meeting is get trained up what you need to know. You chose to be on that, train up. You know, don't expect payment for everything.
Okay, is there further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
I'd like to propose an amendment to this ordinance. I'd like to follow the guidelines that the Planning Commission provided us in their memo from lines 164 to 168. So, that would be striking the words "or physically misses more than half the meetings held by the Commission on which a member serves over any 365 consecutive day period, whether attendance at these meetings was excused, unexcused, or via teleconference."
Okay. Is there discussion on the amendment?
We need a second first.
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
Okay. Now, is there discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, is there objection to the motion? This is on the amendment only. Hearing none, the amendment passes. So, now we are back to the main motion as amended. Is there further discussion? Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm proposing amendments. And this is to the red line copy that we've been provided, line 164. Let me find it in the... So, this would be line 161 of the motion that's on the floor. Make sure the clerk has got it here before we...
Through the chair to Councilmember Graham. Thank you for your consideration. I think that's the piece we just amended.
It is.
Okay. You're going to do another one? Sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Yes. So, I move to amend line 161 by striking the word "unexcused" and then following the word "absences" unless approved or unless excused by a majority of the Commission members.
Can you repeat that, sir?
I move to line 161 to strike the word "unexcused" and then following "absences," add the phrase, "unless excused by a majority of the Commission members."
Madam Mayor, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
The motion has been made and seconded on the amendment by Mr. Graham.
Mayor.
Is there?
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
On that amendment, I think we should have something that says, "Accept as otherwise provided by ordinance." Just because we don't have time to go through the code and make sure that that change in the way that we're dealing with the absences doesn't have an, doesn't implicate any other law. You know, that we're not going to run into a problem, both with the Planning Commission ordinance, but also perhaps in another arena because of the statute on it. So, if we do that, that'll just make sure that your amendment stands lawfully.
So, are you recommending we postpone until a future date? What are you recommending on the country's?
Just that you add the words, so a member has three consecutive unexcused absences unless, or I guess.
Three consecutive absences unless excused.
Unless excused by a majority of the Commission members or otherwise provided by ordinance.
I have no objection to that.
They just added that on, yes.
Is the second okay? Not okay?
No, no objection to that.
Okay. Mr. Johnson.
Madam Mayor, to Stu. Okay, so if you're going to have the Commission, the majority of the Commission, approve the absence, how is this to be done?
Madam Mayor. So, what I'm doing here is taking away the randomness of an excused absence. I mean, I decided to go to my child's birthday party and I'm not going to the Commission meeting. So, I call the clerk or I call the planner and say, "I'm not going to be there." I'm excused. You know, there doesn't have to be a reason given. And that's fine. I don't have any objection with that. But if you miss three consecutive meetings just by calling in, it's time to explain that to your fellow Commission members. And then the Commission members, on their agenda, you know, somehow would have to build in approval of a third or a three consecutive, you know, that third consecutive excused, unexcused or unexplained absence. So, it's just an administrative note that the Planning Commission or Airport Advisory Commission or Parks and Rec Commission would then need to take while doing their meetings. So, all we're doing here is making sure that absences, that there's not three unexcused absences, three absences without excuse, three consecutive absences without an excuse that's acceptable to the Planning Commission.
Madam Mayor, if I may follow up then. But the way that it's read, the way that it would currently read then, the way I understand it would be that any absence would have to be approved by the majority. And other than that, it would be a unacceptable or an unexcused absence.
I don't, I don't read it that way, Mr. Johnson. If a member would read, "A member has three consecutive absences." So, that third consecutive absence would be reason for disqualification for membership for the Planning Commission unless the Planning Commission decides that that third absence is excused. So, it's not something they'd have to look at each time somebody is absent. It's just if there are three consecutive absences.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Graham. I, that was my concern too, is it sounded like there'd be a vote every single meeting somebody was absent. But what it more sounds like is there's no such, in this case, for the commissions, there will no longer be a such thing as an excused or unexcused absence. If everything is strictly just an absence and if it just so happens to be that you then miss three of them in a row, for whatever the reason it might be, essentially on, I don't know if it'd be at the third meeting or if it'd be at the fourth meeting afterward. After, essentially, there would be a vote by the Planning Commission to determine whether this person needs, is going to be removed or not. Or would they be, that's where I'm kind of trying to understand it at now.
Perhaps the attorney could weigh in here. But I would think since it would be an agenda item, it would be at the fourth meeting where that decision would be made. Because you can't just throw random things on the agenda unless you're in Palmer.
So...
Holly.
I don't think we need to identify which meeting it's at. Because sometimes they may be able to call, you know, two weeks ahead of time, right? And sometimes they might be after the fact and they might have to get that, so, that approval later. So, as you say, at the fourth meeting. So, one thing, I think the language that you're, so the way I would word the amendment just based on the conversation and Councilmember Crafton's comments is an amendment to delete "unexcused" and the word "or" on line 161 and add the following language after the word "absences", which is unless the third absence is excused by a majority of the Commission members or otherwise permitted by ordinance. So, if that's helpful for the clerk to have, that's, I think, how we would word it.
Through the chair to the council. So, where I'd like to see us is if we agree with Madam Attorney to make it simple. If there's no objection from the makers of amendment number, maybe one and two, because number one struck "or." So, maybe we just say, if there's no objection from the makers, we withdraw both of those and we start back at the drawing board. Is there any objection?
Madam Mayor. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Graham.
I have no objection as the maker of the motion.
Can I see a copy of that? My concern would be the word "excused" at this point. Because now we're going back to the "excused/unexcused absences." Would be my thought. I like what Mr. Graham said by basically getting rid of the terms "excused" and "unexcused." And it sounds like this is bringing up a whole nother bucket of conversation that we'll deal with at a different time. But, I mean, if that's, if this is the way the attorney says the best way to write it is, I mean, that's partly her job. But that's my concern, is the word "excused" just throat, like it, it means, well, then what's an excused absence is what I come back to. And it goes, so if the third absence is excused and you miss another meeting, are we now back in the same boat again? Or where does that, where does that go?
Through the chair to the council. I guess the way I look at it is it's no different than yours, right? When we call the roll, I will, sometimes you'll have a council member that'll give you a heads up and you'll say, "Hey, I'm going to miss the next meeting because I'm going to be on vacation or I have another matter to attend to." So, but any other meeting, if you're not there, you notice I always say, you know, "Councilmember Smith is absent and excused unless objection is raised." Really, it's up to you, I think, on whether or not you, I don't think you have to define not being there. It's really your discretion.
So, Madam Clerk, I think if you're going to miss three meetings in a row, you need to define to your fellow members of the Commission or the council or whatever's going on there, why you're missing. That, they have to say that's acceptable for you to miss. If it's a, you know, if it's a HIPAA reason, you can say, "I'm missing for a HIPAA issue." And that should be just fine. But, I mean, if you, if you're missing that third meeting because you want to go on vacation, you missed the two meetings before and you didn't tell anybody about it, well, maybe you need to go back and explain, you know, why, why you've missed those meetings. And you might even need to explain why you want to be on the Planning Commission if you're not going to show up to meetings. I don't, maybe I misunderstood what you said. But, but I don't think when you say, you know, "Councilmember Graham is excused unless objection is raised," you know, the other five members of the, of the city council here have no idea why I'm gone unless I have talked to them. And that's not our practice to do that. I'm just saying, in this case, if they're going to miss three consecutive meetings, it should be their practice on that third meeting to let people know why they're going to miss and get that approval from a majority of the council or the Commission.
Madam Mayor. Ms. Cog. And maybe somebody, whether it's the clerk or somebody else, can clarify this for me. So, we're still looking at this about being physically not at a meeting because I have been to, you know, council meetings, Park and Rec meeting, Planning Commission meeting, where a Commission member, a council member has called in for the meeting, been there telephonically, and it was not considered being absent or excused from a meeting. They were, that was considered that you were a part of the meeting. Well, according to this, if you physically miss more...
We already struck that.
Okay, that's what I want clarification on, for sure.
165, we're struck.
Okay. So, you are still considered there if you're there telephonically? Okay, I just wanted...
That's my intent, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I wanted just clarification on that. Thank you. Okay.
I think at this point for our clerk here, I have to say no objection to changing the amendment from what the attorney has provided. I'll, I'll agree to it.
So, Madam Clerk, just to be clear, I don't think there's an amendment on the floor at this point. We need to read in the amendment that the...
That's right.
Okay.
We're getting a read this.
Okay.
So, right now, six is, is as it was, as it's presented in the packet.
Okay, so I think that's going to be passed back down to you. If you could read what the attorney took and scratched, I think was her words.
Madam Clerk, please read the amendment.
So, right now, what we're going to do is we're going to strike six and we're going to insert in its place, "A member has three consecutive absences unless excused by a majority vote of the Commission members or otherwise permitted by ordinance." Did I miss something, Holly?
Well, I think I missed something.
Oh.
We don't refer to special meetings or work session. We just, it's general, which means for council, I believe your code applies it only to missing three consecutive regular meetings. So, it's a question for council, before you adopt this amendment, to think about, do you want those to be three regular, three consecutive, regular Commission meetings? Because some commissions do have more. It doesn't matter because it says, "Express as otherwise permitted by ordinance." So, it might be fine. I just wanted to raise it because I certainly didn't think about it when I proposed it.
So, Madam Mayor, I move the amendment as read by the clerk with the addition of the word "regular." So, a member has three consecutive absences from regular meetings.
Okay.
Does that work, Madam Clerk?
Is there a second?
Second by Councilwoman Johnson.
Okay. The amendment has been made, amendment motion has been made by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the amendment passes.
Madam Mayor, if I may, if I have permission from the body, if I have to do a technical to make this read smoother, if I have your permission to work with the city attorney to do that, we understand the intent. Thank you.
I've got the gist.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now, we are back to the main motion as amended.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Sorry, I'd like to propose a third amendment. So...
No, no, no. You're actually on amendment number two.
Two?
As we withdrew the other two.
So, this is the second amendment.
I see, so the previous, okay.
They just went away.
So, I propose another amendment. How about that? So, I'm on the memo here, page 146, line 219. I'll give you a moment. And I would like to add the words on, so, starting on line 219, like how this is, "And maybe either conducted during a regular meeting if scheduling allows or scheduled and compensated." And then strike the words "as a special meeting." That's okay.
I'm on the clean copy.
Oh.
Page nine.
So, after, so we have, "approved by the mayor shall be mandatory and..." And we're going to add the words, "may be conducted, may either be conducted during a regular meeting if scheduling..."
Let's take an addie's.
Okay.
We are taking an addie's.
Okay, we are back on the record.
Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Do you want me to read in?
Yes.
Okay. What line again is it, Jamie, that you have on yours, the clean copy?
I have 212.
So on line 212, it reads approved by the mayor shall be mandatory, and then there's a semicolon, and may be either conducted during a regular meeting. Or scheduled. And compensated. And then we're gonna strike the words as a special meeting. Like you had asked. That'd be my amendment.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Madam Mayor, I second that motion.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there further discussion? Mr. Graham.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I don't, training is usually conducted for new members of the commission or of the council. For it to be a meeting, the meeting has to be noticed and you have to have a quorum present at the meeting. So if you have a commission of five, like the planning commission, you have to have three people there for the training for it to be a meeting. So I don't, I don't support this, you know? Training sessions should be developed as needed, you know, by the attorney and the planner, in this case for the, for the planning commission, and attendance, like Ms. Veloc said, is expected as part of the job. So I would not vote in favor of this amendment.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Graham.
Oh, sorry, I didn't realize I left that on.
That's okay. Is there objection to the motion?
I object.
I object.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call rule.
Thank you, this is on amendment number two. Councilmember Cottle.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
No.
Councilmember Johnson.
No.
Councilmember Crafton.
Yes.
Councilmember Veloc.
No.
Councilmember Rubio.
No.
Madam Mayor, that fails with councilmembers Cottle and Crafton in support, Graham, Johnson, Veloc, and Rubio opposed.
Okay. So we are back to the main motion as amended with the first amendment.
Correct, I mean, it still stands. We just voted down the amendment to that section, so the, so it still stands.
All right, is there further discussion? Mr. Graham.
Madam Mayor, to everyone's chagrin, I propose an amendment to line 213, 213 and 214 of the original amendment there, to strike the words and compensated as a special meeting.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there discussion?
Madam Mayor, the reason I brought this up, part of this discussion may have been a little bit more germane or a little bit more valid before we made the adjustment to the stipend at the last meeting for the planning commission where they were paid, you know, $125 a meeting and $65 or something like that for a special meeting. Since they are now at a rate of $200 per meeting and given the fact from the discussion we had before that for a special meeting, it has to be noted, it has to be noticed and has to have at least three members there, this just removes the issue of compensation and removes the issue of making it a special meeting.
Further discussion? Hearing none, is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes. So we are back to the main motion as amended with amendments one and two.
Three.
Or one and three.
Yep, and two failed.
And two failed, okay.
She's a liar.
I can't. Anyway.
Madam Mayor, so given the action we took earlier on whatever we were talking about boards and commissions, not on this one, but the one before, are we gonna have to make some technical amendments to the text here when it talks about how you're eligible to be a member of the commission? I have no objection to technical amendments.
Through the chair to Councilmember Graham, the city attorney, and I will work through and report any major changes or deviations, but we will work through those to ensure everything is consistent.
Thank you for saving us a touch of time.
All right, is there further discussion on the main motion as amended? Seeing none, is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes. We are on to new business. Madam? Yes, Madam Clerk, please read the title under new business.
Thank you, that's resolution serial number 2418, authorizing the transfer of funds within an accounting fund in the amount of $100,000 from the sewer forklift fund to VAC pumper fund for the purpose of purchasing a vacuum excavator truck.
Is there a motion for our resolution or ordinance? Resolution serial number 2418.
Madam Mayor, I move resolution serial 2418.
Is there a second?
Rubio seconds.
It has been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Rubio. Is there discussion? Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is really more of a question for finance than it is for you, Eric, but you're certainly welcome to stay up front and enjoy the festivities here. I have never heard of us establishing specific funds for specific capital improvements. I've never heard of a forklift fund. I've never heard of a vacuum excavator truck fund. Is this a new way of accounting for us or is this just an account number that you're now calling a fund? And if it is a fund, how much money would be left in the forklift fund? And secondly, as long as Eric is sitting up there, do we still need a forklift? Or is this kind of like a vehicle replacement fund where we're, you know, putting $5,000 a year into buy a new vehicle for the mayor sort of thing?
So the first question, we technically, they all end up in to their own funds. These are account numbers within a fund that we have based upon Gadsby and our GAAP regulations that we follow. It is considered to be when we approve the adopted budget. It is brought in and each of those capital improvement projects are considered a, an account number within that fund and they are recognized as a fund into themselves because they are appropriated for that purpose only within that fund. So we only, we only have $100,000 that's been appropriated for the sewer forklift and then we have, I can't even remember the other one, but $350,000 for a, you know, VAC pumper truck or whatever it may be. And we can only buy those items that were approved and adopted through the appropriation process. And so in order to move money between those two funds, we're gonna have to do a resolution, but they abide under the normal big funds that we have such as the general fund, the capital project fund, the water fund, sewer fund, those kind of things.
Thank you for the answer. I'm gonna follow up, but first I want to find, is there gonna be any money in this forklift fund? Do we need a forklift? What's, what happens here when we lose the $100,000? Are you just gonna come back and say, hey, we need $100,000 for forklift?
No, so we asked for forklift funds last year, I think, or the year before, and since then we have a loader with forks and another tractor with forks, so we feel the lifting needs within the sewer treatment plant are met with those two pieces of equipment, needing the extra funds to cover the shipping and the additional budget for the last two pumper trucks. We, you know, the forklift became a want, not a need, so we ask, we're asking to move it into these two trucks so we can finish those purchases.
So we're, we've adapted other vehicles and we no longer need a forklift fund?
Correct.
So the forklift fund would be at a balance of zero, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So coming back to accounting, now you say, well, the city council appropriated money for a forklift, so that money goes into account specified as a forklift. So when the city council approves money for tools and equipment, okay, and then that money is not used, how come that money is not locked into tools and equipment and is then moved without council approval to a different accounting fund is what you're calling it now?
So the, through the mayor, the, the difference in that is, is that the tools and equipment is placed actually into the general fund, which is actually divided down into departments and divisions within those, and it, those funds are fluctuating in different areas and so we, based upon current code, the way it's written, it states that a department can move funding within each of those accounting and division areas. When it is put into a capital project, it is actually a capital project that is designated for that purpose only. And when you put it into the general fund, it's designated as that department's budget and so the budget and within that department is allowed to be moved between that period of time based on current code.
Mr. Johnson.
Madam Mayor, to finance directors, so then, is what you really did is you created a new account number for the pump truck, thirty, I mean, 310, 4359 dash 435, 45 dash 30, that's totally new and was not in the budget before this?
No, that, but that was currently in the budget. This is additional funding that is needed in that. It currently had $350,000, I believe that was appropriated in 2024, and then I believe a couple of meetings ago, there was either an ordinance or a resolution that was also done, that moved funding into that also.
Okay, further discussion, Rubio.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Yeah, like Cassie had said, back in October, we, we did the purchase of the vacuum on one of the action memorandums, and that was for 569,000, right? So help me kind of walk through this. The revised purchase amount is 571,262.
Correct.
What is, what is the increase of what we approved back in October? Did we not finalize that and lock it in?
They're definitely cost escalations. Some of the other changes came about with how these specialized vehicles are built. We talked about how the chassis comes from one provider and then it's shipped to another provider. So there were some cost escalations that came with that. The remaining request for the $100,000, so you see that we've explained that it went from 596 up to 571 and that is within the $100,000 request. The remaining amount of that request has to do with the shipping costs from Seattle up here for both this piece of equipment and the previous pumper truck that was approved under AM 2429 in June that comes out of this same account. So to Mr. Johnson's question, when a CIP is approved, it is then given an account by finance following Gadsby rules. That account was created back when the first pumper truck was initiated within the CIP process, and so that's where 4530 came from. So then we went through the review and approval process of the VAC excavator, which is what we're talking about here. They're, they're basically same sort of animal, so through accounting purposes, that money was put in the same account. The first truck still hasn't shipped and we just got word that, of course, everything coming through the port of Anchorage is going to cost more, so we're very concerned about covering those shipping costs. And now we know that we're gonna have that same cost escalation with shipping for this truck too. They're both extremely heavy and the tariff is based on like size and we're, it's hard for us to forecast, so we want to be careful about the funding. So with the increase in this current vehicle's cost and the shipping for both of them, that's the, the round number of 100,000 request.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So do we have a quote to come up with that 100,000 that we could see?
We don't know how to quote it. It's so complicated in how the shippers take, take hold of it as basically when it arrives down at Anchorage.
So how do we know that even 100,000 covers that?
Well, we have looked at what other shipping had come from other vehicles, so it was an educated guess from historical purchases.
Thank you.
Mr. Graham.
And if it turns out we only need 78,000 instead of 100,000, what happens to the other $22,000?
It remains in that account with those limitations, then it goes towards the vehicles that were approved, the CIP.
And then after three years, once the project has been fully completed, it returns to the capital projects fund balance?
But during that three years, you know, let's say you wanted new mudflaps that said, Lydford's the mayor of Wassila, I mean.
Custom mud.
That wasn't part of the original plan. I mean, is it, is it kind of a slush fund that can be used or is it, or is it, we're gonna do what we told the city council we're gonna do and if we don't spend all the money, well, good on you because now, you know, now, now we're gonna have, three years from now, we'll have $22,000.
They revert back. Well, you have seen us also come and say there's unspent funds in this account. We don't have an expense that fits under that original purview, could we move it? So you do see that quite a bit. So we would often do the same thing, say, we have 27,000 left or whatever it comes to, would you let us move it to this other purchase that we think makes sense?
Great, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure which one of you would answer the question. So what if once we take delivery of the truck, is that gonna be when the funds go back or is it have to wait out the three years at that point? Because technically, once we take delivery of the truck, we've completed the purpose of the project, which was to purchase the truck.
Right, so we would receive the truck, we'd make sure it works. I mean, I would think if there's some ancillary things that need to be added to it, for instance, if we, we usually put radios in the trucks, we just did a major radio overhaul with all city and police vehicles. That came out of operations budget. I'd like to put the radio in the pumper truck using whatever remains in those funds, get it up and running, but, you know, anything outside of kind of the reasonable accounting requirements on how it touches and relates to the original cost would either sit dormant for three years, which doesn't make much sense, or we'd come back to the council and say, we have this leftover, can we use it for something else with your approval?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Rubio.
Another question, so in our hands, this beautiful pump truck, what is the total cost? Cause I'm with it delivered and everything, just so that we know.
At this point, it would be 571 plus shipping and we don't know exactly what it will be.
And don't forget Anchorage is adding. And don't forget Anchorage is adding the tariff.
Right, that's part of the concern we have.
Well, we don't know how much.
But one of the things that happens, when the CIP is complete, that is a number that finance tracks. This is an asset, we will track that. We will know the exact and total cost of it because it'll be amortized through our fleet when it's all said and done.
And we're still looking at eleven months from now potentially getting the truck.
Yes, very long lead item.
Further discussion? Hearing none?
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Uh, is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes. Madam Clerk? No business? Okay, we are on to communications. We have none. We are on to audience comments. We are now at audience comments, which is a time for members of the public to share their views. To share their views with the council. This is not a question and answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the council or administration. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to? Audience comments. Seeing no one, we'll close audience comments, bring it back to the dice. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to the council for, um, that was a lot of heavy lifting and so, we're good on these ordinances, they're adopted, just great work. These were big ordinances, so, and again, we'll report back if anything, if we do deviate, have to deviate from your intent. So, just, we'll see you all here tomorrow, Tuesday, the seventeenth, um, for our goals and initiative, uh, special meeting, six o'clock, and then if work is not complete, that meeting will continue to the eighteenth, the following night, Wednesday, and then next regular meeting, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to engage council a bit on regarding Title sixteen and the timeline. When we were preparing to sort of take the next step, I was looking at, uh, council's comments and direction regarding the time where I, when we plan to take it back up. I had late February, early March. Um, I am out of country for two weeks, uh, for over, December twenty-first to January fourth. That timeframe works for our office and getting council a compiled final dra, an ordinance for consideration. It also allows us to, I believe, take into consideration the planning commission's comments and recommendations, um, to a certain extent, since they've been going through the ordinance contemporaneously with council. They're about one meeting behind, uh, council. So, but I didn't want to do, I didn't want to make presumptions about our approach. So, um, I'm hoping to just get an, get a idea. If, if that is council's recollection, if council's comfortable with that, um, if council anticipated other meetings, you know, or wants them, then we should talk about that. I guess I just wanted to throw that out there. I apologize, it was a long meeting and I did not mean to add to the...
Mr. Crafton?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, Jamie and I had talked about this before as well. I went back and listened, cause I was mostly the one that had the comments around, uh, the timeline that we were looking for. And I thought I had said something as well, a little bit more specifically, but I know what I did say was that I wanted to be one hundred percent done with this by the end of March. That was, that was the comment I had made. I believe I was the last one to speak, so nobody else jumped on the, on the bandwagon there, but since then, there's been no objection, it sounded like, to that timeframe. And that's the time, I mean, honestly, I'd like to be done sooner than that, but I know, I personally would like to see, give the public two opportunities to have public participation on this one, kind of like we've done in the past with the budget. I would also like to, as a council, uh, have probably a special meeting at least, if not two, on the, what I confer, I refer to as the revised copy, the, the new copy that you're planning on providing us, that has the changes that we've already discussed in it. Because there might be, i- i- I mean, it's, it's going to be a big document and it might be a time for us to discuss as a council if we have an op, once we have a chance to look back through it, we look at our own comments. I know I have plenty of sticky notes in my binder right now and highlights as to things I still wanted to talk about. I would love an op, another opportunity to have that conversation and then still have those public, uh, participations as two meetings. So, again, my thing, and I'm trying to be generous by saying the end of March, but that was, that was my thought, was to be wholly done by the end of March.
I'm going to be the bad, the bearer of bad news. We, this is one of the few titles where we involve the commission and they have a very substantive role in reviewing Title sixteen. I think we can absolutely aim for the, for the, for March, for the end of March. I think it would be, um, disingenuous of me as your attorney to say that you will absolutely get there because you have, and remember, these titles usually take about three years. You've actually moved through them very fast compared to the general tract. A reason why it would take more time is the commission has, by not only ordinance, but by state law, they have that role that we've created for them. So I would suggest we aim for that, but we give them, I, I mean, I think the late February, early March, getting that final draft, that ordinance in front of council with incorporated commission comments, that is absolutely realistic. I just don't know what will happen with that ordinance once you're, once you start going through that process. You may have commission input that will slow it down. If you want two special meetings and, or two, if you want a council special meeting and two public hearings, I really think you're looking at the end of March, early April for the actual, this is approved and going into effect. Uh, I, I mean, I'll defer to the, the city clerk if she sees, cause I think, Jamie, your understanding of how all that plays together is better than mine. So if I'm wrong, I just don't want to mislead the council.
Through the chair, um, to the council, I think that it, it really depends. I, if you get back your clean copy and you make substantive changes, does then that not have to go back before the commission? I'm going to call that draft two. And so that, of course, is going to delay the process even more. I just want council to be aware, remember our budget calendar. So we're going to hit heavy budget meetings, um, April, budget is introduction. The finance director is nodding at me and then we just continue bang, 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 to have special meetings and that's really the focus shift. It's a huge priority for council, the budget, and so try to balance that with Title sixteen. And I understand, I understand the frustration. I'm not, the, I'm just reporting kind of what I see as, as where we're going to be. So just some things to think about.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Crafton?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I guess I'll throw out the idea like we've done in, we did in the past. I mean, maybe what we need to look at when we look at that revised copy is a committee of the whole with the planning commission. So we're not having to play that game of, oh, we have to kick it back down to them for comments. It's, we're going to look through this as, as two bodies, work through any substantive, cause then it's, it's, this is going to, that would be the first opportunity that we've had with the new document, to hear directly from them. It would give us an opportunity to take their feedback in and then at that point, we could just push it straight into public comment, uh, assuming that there's not such substantive changes that we, we need more time. But I mean, at that point, we, we can have that conversation, though it sounds, to me, that would be, I'm not trying to just fast-track this thing through and be done with it, but at the same time, I'm like, I'd like to be done with this knowing that budget season is, is right around the corner because if we don't complete it by the end of March, I mean, we're kicking the can basically to, to halfway through the summer and at that point, eh, there, there's just nothing that existing people can do, assuming that they can even do anything with it at this point. I mean, I, I know the people I've had conversations with already, uh, have been hesitant to really dive into it because, again, we don't know how many more substantive changes we're going to make to it at that point. So, uh, that would be my thought, is to consider a, a joint session of committee of the holes with the planning commission to look at what I, I call the clean copy as the newly revised copy.
Madam Mayor? Um, I do agree with having the committee of the whole and the one thing that I like the push is because construction season is so short in Alaska and we already have projects on the table for next summer and the, these contractors, um, and business owners need a direction to go and I feel like if we're just leaving it out there, um, and not really putting some feet to the fire to get it done.
Mayor, I would just say, that would be, I think that would cut the timeline down if you can, and so we can get the final draft to the commission who has been working. I think in January, they're doing a special meeting to finish, um, to finish Title sixteen and to catch up to council, because they're behind council only because, you know, as a matter of necessity and crap, it's not, they have not, they're not behind council because of any failure on the commission's part. It's just council makes their comments and the commission reviews the comments of council, um, and, uh, um, you know, and does it. So if we can get a January meeting, um, that is dedicated to Title sixteen, which the planner and, and it was already, we've already been discussing that, so I think that would be good. Then you would look at going into your meetings in February, um, for, and probably need a special meeting. Um, because I, realistically, once we get council, once we get the commission through that, it's going to take us some time to get, to give you a final draft ordinance for all of those changes. We still have a few administrative components regarding, uh, wastewater permitting, for example, that need to be, uh, incorporated into that final draft, so.
Through the chair to the body, I would just encourage the planning commission to, if they have to have perhaps a special meeting to catch up, so that we are all on the same page and back together and ready to meet, to, you know, giving you time to incorporate those changes, some of the administrative changes you need to make. Um, and an aggressive timeline would be to have joint meetings together. I'm thinking late February, early March.
And then in terms of public... It was realistic from our side, so I'm from the legal team's side.
If, that, I mean, so, and then in terms of public hearing, council member Crafton, just to be clear, so at every special meeting, we have two opportunities, like at every meeting for pub, are you requesting a, a specific public hearing that's noticed or just the opportunity for them to comment, come to a meeting like they can do at any meeting?
Un, unless there's objection to the body, I, I mean, I... I liked the idea of doing the, uh, kind of like we did with budget where we have two special meetings scheduled, specifically do that. I mean, it's Title sixteen, we, it's a long document. I wouldn't want audience members to have to sit through a bunch of other meetings just to talk about that twice. Uh, so how we did, we, we've done with budget is we have a special meeting, opens public participation, leave, we table it or something and then the next day, we come back and have another opportunity for public participation and then we, we take it from there and amend it if we need to or pass it, whatever it might be. That was my thought process, at least on it, if, if the body's okay with it as well.
Through the chair though, to council member Crafton, I just want to point out during that process, you've got an ordinance, you know, you've got an ordinance number of sign, you're, you're in a more formal setting. You take it from introduction, introduction, you set the two public hearing dates, it's assigned a number, it's a final document where this is more of a draft, a final draft document. So I just am trying to, we can certainly schedule public hearings on a draft document, but at that point, it, they're draft.
Drafts can be changed.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm saying this would be after we've had our committee of the holes with us or the, and the commission as well. Like, we, we finalized as much as we can finalize it, uh, without making official amendments. Because, I mean, keep in mind, as a committee of the whole, we can't take action on it. We're really just kind of all agreeing like, hey, we, we like this idea, we don't like this idea, let's just get rid of this right now. Uh, and then when we get to the public participation of it, where we have a final draft cop, copy, maybe there's something in there that I didn't get a chance to discuss that I wanted to amend. That's when I would make my amendments, is at that time.
I apologize, I think I'm not understanding. So in a normal process, we have an ordinance as much clean as we're, you know, we've all agreed on. It's assigned a number, it's brought forward on one agenda for, for introduction, first reading, and then at that point in time, you know, we can set multiple public hearing dates, but it's a formal document that goes through the process. Once the public hearing closes, a main motion on the floor is to adopt and then at that point, amend, formal amendments are offered. Is that the process you see?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're on the same page and I will schedule two public hearings then, just like the budget. So we'll do our introduction and when you introduce it at that meeting, it'll have two public hearing dates, whatever those are.
Correct. That, and, and again, the intent is because, I, special meeting specific to that item. We don't...
Correct.
Burden everybody else with everything else.
But that will, that, that will come after the two bodies have met.
Correct.
The attorneys had an opportunity to make changes from the body, you know, consensus of the body as well as any administrative changes and then we have that, really at that point in time, that could potentially be the third draft.
Depending on how many changes we made at the joint session.
Correct.
I would, and I would say, in order to actually hit this timeline, I'm treating that draft that I'm bringing next as a, as the ordinance that's being proposed. So if council chooses to treat it, stamp it draft and attach it to a staff memo or some, I, that's, but I'm going to treat it like I am giving you the ordinance because we've had the sessions that were broken down by segment, that were joint sessions with the planning commission and we've done divisions, that we've broken it out by division and gone through each division. So I feel like council has had each of those, you know, has ran through that, each of those, um, sort of work session, committee of the whole based approaches. I'm, so, I'm going to put it in ordinance draft final form and then, um, if, you know, if, if we back it out and you're using it more as a committee of a whole, fine, but I, I do think that we're going to, at a certain point, it's time to just get it out there and then we can change it and put it in a substitute ordinance if the changes are there. You know, I mean, that's the other option, I guess. So, the timeline I gave council was based on the fact that I deliver a final draft ordinance for council to address. And doing the joint, uh, meeting, I don't, I mean, I know that's different than what Wasilla is used to, but I don't see a problem with that, esp, it, it's just how we, how we label coun, uh, the commission's participation or council's participation and maybe it's two meetings, special meeting of the commission and a special meeting of council and they're, you know, but I, I, I'm just, am I understanding correctly or we, oh, so I'm just, okay, great. All right. So it sounds like we're all on the same page. An ordinance is coming back in front of both bodies, sitting jointly. That is going to be our ordinance numbered, the works, yes? Okay. Thank you very much. I'm, I apologize for derailing us.
Council member Johnson?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. My thoughts, I have two thoughts. Um, I have a real concern with the council and administration interface. Um, I found it very useful in the past where the administration people would be available for informal conversations and I see that this is going to be greatly curtailed, uh, making the interface now to be highly formalized, which if you're working during the days and the people, and the administration people you need to see or they're working, now it becomes, uh, much more of an inconvenient kind of process. It certainly is not, uh, helpful in terms of solving little problems. Uh, no longer can you just come up to somebody and say, hey, before the meeting, this is what I see, blah, 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 blah. Okay, now it has to be a formal type meeting because the informal has gone away and that concerns me. Secondly, as we move into goals and objectives now for the next budget's, uh, cycle, is what will be prevent, presented to us over the next day or two is going to be basically the administration's goals and objectives and I have... goals and objectives, and I have, I think currently, six things that I would like to see, and I don't know how the process is going to be, as to how we in the council will fold in our ideas and suggestions into the final goals and objections over, objectives, not objections, pardon me, that will be presented to us in the next two days. So, if we can think about how we as a council should give our more formal ideas to you, I would like some guidance on that. Do you want memos from us, or do you just expect us to have verbal comments over the next several days? Thank you.
Councilmember Rivia.
Sorry. I'm excited to actually see Title 16 in that final draft, even if we call it draft two, whatever we got to call it, I'm excited. And pushing it forward, like I said, because I think in the community, that's what our job is, and we need to get going on that, and I am thankful that you will work with us, Holly, so I appreciate you.
Councilmember Cottle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be glad with Title 16, as much as everybody. When it's signed, sealed, and delivered, I think we need to celebrate. And I think the community will too. They'll be really happy with a much updated condensed version that's very much more user-friendly. And I know we have a lot of people waiting for that final product, and projects waiting for that. Other than that, I really enjoyed participating in the AML conference, some really, really great work sessions, things like that. Some of the sessions were very interactive. Some, a couple of the ones that I went to were very, very interactive, and it's really good to be able to listen to how other communities are dealing with issues in their community, and finding how much you have in common with some of the issues, you know, like, you know, recruiting and retaining employees. Keeping a full police force was really a common factor for almost every community. It was really tough for them. And so, it was really good to do that, and it's great, you know, to always be able to interact with other council members from different communities. Really proud to serve on the AML board now to represent the Matsu. Had my first board meeting, it was great. Mayor Ledford being our new vice president, and Stu being there as past president. I've been to many AMLs over the years, and it's, you know, as a spouse for over 20 years, going to AML, and now doing it with me being an elected official, is very humbling, and quite an honor, and I'll do all I can to work hard on the AML board for the Matsu. And that's it, thank you.
Councilmember Crafton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And to first start, I'd say, yes, AML is really good. It's always fun to get to go to AML, again, see everybody else, other communities. I always enjoy seeing some of the really far out communities as well, because, you know, it's really hard to get connected with people that aren't on the road system, as well as just kind of a chance to really learn about how, what we can do as council members to be better for our community. It's always nice, some of these work sessions that they bring in, some of the things that you learn, it's nice, because sometimes we don't always have to be the first one to try something, we get to hear how somebody else failed. I know one of the really awesome sessions, I didn't get to attend it, because I was in another really good one around zoning, was camping, and what Juno was doing. So, it's really good, because as a council, when multiple, multiple of us go, we can say, hey, I'm going here, you're going there, and we're able to split our knowledge and split the time, and learn a lot more that way than all of us sitting in the same room together, learning about the exact same thing. So, it's really good. I love AML every time, it was a good time. Second, thank you, council, to the two ordinances we passed pertaining to, one, the Planning Commission, and then specific, as well as commissions generally. As I mentioned, that was probably one of the first things I started working on when I became a council member, I remember, still remember my first meeting, making those comments. So, those were a long time in the coming, I really appreciate the feedback and the back and forth conversation. That's how we get things done, is by having a conversation and being prepared at a meeting like we are here. And then lastly, because he stayed for so long, thank you, Senator Wilson, for your service to the city. Really appreciate you being here, and thanks for hanging out with us. I know this is when it's really fun, is when we're sitting here debating four amendments back and forth, and really getting into the weeds about back trucks and how money's spent, so. And then as well, thank you to those that got elected. Good luck, and as the mayor said at the beginning, we hope to see you here in the future. So, thank you all, and looking forward to Title 16. Have a good night.
Councilmember Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And mostly, the audience is gone now, but it's always great to see somebody here. And I know we had a young man here, was part of this schooling at Career and Tech, came and made notes about what happened here versus what he was taught in school, you know, so he can contrast the real world with the world of textbooks there. So, I think that's great, you know, his grandfather was here with him, and that's really super to see those folks here. Thank you for being here, Senator Wilson. Always a pleasure to see you, and I hope things are going well for you. Still, Senator Wilson, for another, you know, almost a month here or so, to make the most of it. So, to the council, as many of you may know, my former spouse and the mother of my three children passed away suddenly and unexpectedly on the 5th of December. There will be a, there will be a celebration of life for her on December 18th, which is a day that we have a special meeting scheduled. That celebration of life is at 5:30. I am asking the council to cancel the December 18th meeting and reschedule that for a time when I would be able to attend. That would take a vote of the council to do that, and I ask your consideration to make that happen. The clerk tells me that December 30th is available, but I realize that's in the middle of everybody's vacation, so that's, that's not what I am suggesting, but I am asking that the special meeting for December 18th at 6:00 PM be canceled, so that I may participate in the celebration of life for the mother of my children. Also, wanted to, well, the audience is gone, but I wanted to wish everybody a happy holiday, you know, but a little bit late for that, but I don't know how I would go about, Madam Clerk. Do I need to put a motion, or how would I do that?
Yeah, through a motion.
So, Madam Mayor, I move to cancel the December 18th special meeting.
I'll second that.
Really?
The motion has been made and seconded to cancel the December 18th special meeting. Is there objection to the motion? There are none, motion passes.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I don't know if it's appropriate now, but is it amenable? Do folks know their schedules? Would you like me to reschedule that, perhaps? You said December 30th wouldn't work, maybe January 6th, which is a Monday, I'm trying to keep to the Monday schedule. Would that work? Councilmember Graham, does that work?
Yes, ma'am.
So, may we revise the motion to say to cancel the, or to reschedule, thank you, 12:30 to January 6th? Yes. Does that work for you, Madam Deputy? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Belloc.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have much. I do want to offer my sincerest condolences to Stu and his family. I've met Linda several times. Yeah, she was a pistol. She was fun. And thank you for the meeting. It's good to see Senator Wilson here, and Holly, thanks for your hard work again on Title 16, and we'll see everyone tomorrow, and Merry Christmas, but we'll say Merry Christmas before that, because we'll see each other tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay. Senator Wilson, it's always good to see you. Of course, I see you quite frequently now, you know, but anyway, thank you guys for the meeting tonight. Mr. Johnson, I don't think you've got anything to worry about as far as getting hold of the directors. Jamie and I sat down with this and figured this out, of what I couldn't do, and whatever, as far as being in contact with the directors. Because as the mayor, it's my job to protect the employees, and I definitely will do that. And sometimes you have to put things in place that a lot of people don't like, but that's one of those things. So, if the time comes that things can be rectified to where I can go back to an open-door policy like I've always had, I will do so. But until then, it, like I say, it's my job to protect my employees, and I will absolutely do that. So, anyway, with...